We have a roll call.
Mayor Hassler.
Here.
Alderman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Mooney. Alderman Donovan.
Here.
Alderman Jokers.
Here.
Alderman Jones.
Here.
Alderman Stupi.
Here.
Alderman Prince.
Here.
Alderman Ruzika.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Very good. I'm gonna look at your agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I had a presentation to the Valley High School last Friday. They did a service in the community. All their students worked all over the community. It was the old school or seniors?
High school.
The high school.
High school.
And I just thought that was cool. Judd Naggar was gonna be here, but he had a confirmation he had to be at tonight. He didn't wanna single out two students because there were so many of them. But he couldn't be here tonight, so we're gonna put that off. But I thought it was just a good idea to just a certificate of appreciation. Anytime our youth get to work in the neighborhoods and they worked all over. They worked at the different centers in the neighborhoods. So I thought that was outstanding, so. Very good. So that takes us to our city administrators' report.
Okay. In our last meeting, we tabled an item for approving the lease purchase agreement because it wasn't completed yet. I spoke to the lawyer who's preparing it. He has prepared it and sent it to Mrv. Bank, his client. And I haven't heard from the bank yet, but they're reviewing it and it should be available, certainly in our next meeting. Cochran Engineering, it's on the agenda tonight for doing the design work for Chadwell Lane. They've been out. They've done some preliminary work in order to produce the estimate of the cost. You'll notice when we get there that the estimate, I think, is high. He thinks it's high. But whenever you do those kinds of things without doing the actual engineering work, you always have to come up with a figure you think is safe. But we have the money to get that done, even if it's at that level, so we're good to go. When we approved the downtown tax increment finance district, there was a provision in it that we have to have a public hearing after three years. That's now. So I'm preparing some materials to have at a public hearing, maybe before our next meeting. Likewise, the mayor and I met with the property owner on Main Street today about the house there that's in disrepair. And so he's directed me to re-initiate the public nuisance process, which we went through once before, but failed to act because we had trouble. Actually, she was doing some things. So I gotta freshen up all that information so that when we have a public hearing on it, you'll get it with most recent condition rather than relying on the old pictures and the old evidence. And I guess, Mark, do you think that hearing should take place at a time other than during a regular meeting?
Well, you can do it.
Okay.
Yeah, you just have a separate hearing.
Okay. You're gonna have to schedule another night or something?
No, normally what I would do is if you have a light agenda, you do that at the beginning and then maybe push back the regular meeting to like 6:30 or something. The expectation would be that nobody would show up for that one.
The only person who would show up, we can't find.
We still have to have a hearing and present evidence and...
Yeah. That won't be next week because I've got to send her notice at her last known address and wait to see if she receives it and all that kinda stuff. Mayor and I attended, I thought, an interesting meeting at the county commission where a presentation was made by this company, EVO Medical. They're in Cape Girardeau in Jackson. They provide a clinic where people just become members of the organization and receive their medical care unlimited from the doctors at this clinic. And it's primary care. It's not surgery or anything. And for between $59 and $79 a month, a family, this is not per individual, who subscribes can receive their medical care from this clinic. And they're investigating the possibility of doing that in St. Genevieve. Their big contract in Cape is with the school district. And so the school district has figured out a way to adjust their catastrophic coverage and then pay on a per-member, employee basis for the clinic services. And presumably, it saves them a lot of money. This guy was talking like, you know, $30 prescriptions being provided for $4 because of bulk buying. He negotiates deals with pharmacies. And it was... I was impressed with kinda with the concept. I'm not a big fan of prepaid services, but this wasn't quite like that. And I was... And the county said that they would like to hear more, so we'll listen in as the county takes a look at it. I interviewed one candidate for the community development administrative position. I've received a couple of more. The only one who seemed to have kind of the minimum qualifications. Without going into detail, while she's educated and has good work experience, she really doesn't know anything about what we do. But then people I've talked to said, "You're probably not gonna find anybody who knows what you do, so you're gonna have to find somebody who's capable and educate them." So I'm kinda giving that some thought. You know, one of the important things when you hire somebody in a position like this is you try and hire somebody who you think is compatible in that workspace. And so far, we've been pretty lucky, kinda lucky. But at least there's kinda some hope that there's somebody out there who's willing to do that job. And finally, as far as the written report, I've included the activity that's occurred on the community development since Carlo's last report. And a couple of things came up after I wrote my report that I'd like to talk to you about. I've been asked a couple of times about the holes that are being drilled around town. Mississippi Lime is putting in piezometric monitors to monitor water levels. And so they're putting one at Blaine Street and behind the Microtel, and I don't know, there's some others. But if you see that drilling work going on, it's Mississippi Lime putting those monitoring wells in. Gary measured the square yardage for the roadwork that you approved at our last meeting. And we use the unit cost that we paid for Lynn Street last year. And I've heard the asphalt's no more expensive than it was last year, if not less expensive. And it looks like we're gonna come in right on that, just under that $200,000 figure. So I'm preparing the bid documents, and we'll get an advertisement for bid out next week. And I'll put the bids specs together and we'll proceed. Some of you have noticed this work that's going out in front of what will be the museum, putting in new water lines. That raised a question of what our standards are for road repair. We've had a standard that I just brought in and gave it to Dave at the time. Gary's got it. Pam had it. And it was a standard for how a contractor is supposed to repair the ditch. And then it calls for bridging the trench before you do your overlay, so the patch is sitting on undisturbed dirt on either side of the trench to keep it from settling on It turns out, we kinda already had that and just didn't know it. The careful reading of the code caused me to pull the ordinance, and the ordinance had this road repair as part of it, but it's only in our code by reference. So kinda nobody knew it was there because it was stuck to the back of an ordinance that was passed in 1991. So I was gonna recommend approving this at this meeting tonight. And upon discovering that we had it and just it wasn't in the code, specifically in the code, it was just in the code by reference, we don't need to act. We just need to make sure that when someone comes in to get a permit to do an excavation, we give them the information and the standard that they need to follow, and we will do that.
I got a question. Steve, are you following this standard when you're digging in the streets?
Depending on the hole, yeah.
Okay.
So. We didn't allow it.
And finally, I'm gonna tell you the story and ask for some direction. I could make a decision, but the cemetery, her favorite part of St. Genevieve in her work. I'm kidding. You know, in our cemetery, Crest Lawn Cemetery, there's some old burial sites there. And the records that we got weren't always accurate and aren't always accurate. So we had a situation where the grave digger was digging a grave for a man that had died and noticed that there was something in the ground on the lot next to it that was supposed to be for his wife. She was still alive, obviously. And so he notified Pam. Pam called the widow and informed her of the situation and provided burial space on the other side of the grave where the husband was being buried. And that was the end of it, two years ago.
Well, a year and a half was when I noticed, or six months later, when I noticed, when I went out there for something else, the headstone had been placed already.
Right. The notification was...
Right.
So apparently, the woman either didn't recall, didn't tell anybody, I don't know, but they put a headstone in. It's now kinda on the wrong two parcels with the names reversed from where they should be, even if you moved it over and put it on the... So the heirs, she's now died, and her daughters are saying, "We, you know, it's up to the city to make this right." I don't think we aired, but I am sympathetic to their situation. And she really kinda came out with it today. She said, "I don't have money. I can't... If I wanted to fix it, I wouldn't be able to fix it." We think we have some options here, and that's kinda what I want from your direction. One is to say, you know, our records are clear. Notes were made with conversations. We think the monument company messed up. The deceased mother didn't inform them of the change, something other than us. We could pay for a new headstone, about $2,500. Probably less than that because we wouldn't need to buy the whole headstone. We could use the base and get a new headstone. We could say, you know, "We didn't air. I'm sorry. There's no role for us in resolving this." Or we could have the headstone refaced. The monument company that Pam talked to said that will... If you look close, you're gonna be able to tell that that was done, but the normal observer probably won't notice it. And then move it. And we can move it. I mean, instead of... So she then said, you know, "I could pay half." So I guess my question is, even though I don't think we made a mistake, do you think we should replace it? Reface it and move it?
Who said they should pay half?
Huh?
Who said they would pay half?
The daughter.
What about... Sometimes they have a bronze plaque that's sort of attached to it. What about doing something like that that would cover what the error is that would go up? Or even a thin piece of stone with the correct information applied? I mean, I don't know. Rather than buy... I think we oughta do something for them, even if it's not our fault, but I don't know.
May I ask you a quick question? It was to pay for the... It was a total of $2,500. Would the cost be roughly if we were to reface it, same or different, less?
He wasn't sure. He didn't give me an amount for sure.
It could be a lot less. I mean, whether it's half, I don't know.
But he can't guarantee that it'll for sure cover up the, you know, it'll be a clear cover.
So is this not the same company that did the original tombstone?
I didn't check with the same company. I was just calling to get information about how much it would cost.
Cost.
So if they pay half...
If we were gonna take the position that we didn't think there's any role for us in this, then it's gonna be between the heirs and the monument company. I don't wanna get in the middle of that.
I personally think this is between us and the monument company. The heirs already paid for their headstone and stuff, so either the city or the monument company was at fault here. That we shouldn't burden the family any further with that. I mean...
Well, I...
I'm not saying the city at all.
That's fine. I don't agree with you. I think we informed the proper party of the problem.
Well, I think the city should work with the monument company for a resolution and then leave the homeowner. I mean, they already paid their services.
Backing up a couple of steps here, so I get my head around this, right. Who ordered the marker, the tombstone?
Originally?
Originally.
The family.
The family. So when it...
The widow, I guess, of the guy that died.
So when it came in, you said it's wrong, it's reversed of what it's...
Well, it was...
I didn't even know it was placed up there.
It was made with the assumption that the wife would go in the lot to the left.
Well, then that's...
But that lot, as it turns out, is already occupied.
And when we noticed that it was like that, we were gonna try, Mike was gonna try and see if he, the grave digger, to see if we could possibly put her there. And he said that there's no way. There's something, there's definitely something there.
So it really isn't our fault that it's made wrong.
How does that work when somebody passes away and somebody's buried? They go to some record system to buy a plot to see?
Well, we now... We changed all that when I got here. Now, every lot is sold as a subdivision lot would be sold, and a deed is recorded. So... And we have database, so that'll never happen again. But we're still dealing with caskets in the ground that were put there 150 years ago.
So that's...
That we don't know about.
And nobody wrote it down.
Until we get there and the grave digger digs up and says, "Hey, there's somebody here." And then you have to go to the family and say to them, "There's somebody there in the grave that they were in the spot that they were promised."
The records weren't maintained by the city originally. They were maintained by a funeral home, and then they were maintained by a city employee.
So, not to beat this to death, so the family ordered the marker. The marker was incorrect, but did the family base what that was on what they thought was in the, who was in the ground? So, I mean, was that because...
Well, I think there's some confusion. So the marker was placed before the lady died, correct? She had the marker placed.
Yeah.
And it just didn't have her date of death on it yet because she hadn't died yet. So she's the one that actually ordered it and put it there before she died, and she had it put in the wrong spot.
Well, Pam has records of having talked to her.
Right.
You know, and the daughter was saying, you know, she wasn't in mental condition to receive that information. The fact that at the time, you know, she may not have remembered it later...
Doesn't the monument company contact you guys to verify that they're in the right spot?
Not always.
That's a bad practice.
That happened with my mom when she died. The monument people turned it the wrong way, and when we turned it, I just let it go.
Or you just flipped it around 180 degrees?
Yeah, but then that puts them in the wrong spot. But to me, it's gonna be...
Well, then the face of the monument's facing the wrong way, isn't it?
Yeah, it was because there was two roads, and it was a big mess.
Well, I don't know. I mean, it doesn't... I think if a lady is, the lady is willing to pay for half of the fix, she's willing to pay for half of it?
Let me offer the refacing solution.
I think that's the way to go.
See if she'll pay for half of it.
She'll pay for half of that, and we can pay for the other half.
I just was thinking...
And then Pam has got a handle on all this now. But still, we're gonna still find stuff in the past that could happen, you know? So, you know, it's just something we have to deal with.
Every time it comes up, that's gotta be the way. That's gotta be the way.
I... It is not.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
You have Kenny's... Kenny's not able to be here tonight. She had his report. Is there any questions about Kenny's report? It's pretty... Everything's pretty well detailed. Gary, you wanna come up and give your report, sir?
Good evening, Gary.
We're in the mowing season.
Yes, we are.
In between mowing, we're trying to do some asphalt patching. We had some dirt work to do in a few places. We managed to get that down in the dry spell. We went through this week and topped off several graves at the cemetery that had settled, so keep that up in order. You guys got any questions on my report? Yeah, we're real close. Just a bump in the road.
Yeah, yeah.
You've been sharp for, what, two, three months, haven't you?
Yeah. Been a couple extra months, about three weeks now, so...
Good, good.
Questions, comments?
Will you have summer hires, Gary?
Yes. Taking applications on them now.
Good. That's good.
Martin? Quick question. So I was going up Chadwell Lane. All of that dead wood that's just off the pavement, in fact, I guess there was a log rolled down the road sometime. I don't know where it came from.
The big log on the right hand side?
Yes.
That come out of the creek.
Really?
Yeah. We drug it up there because all that dead wood, Saturday, we were planning on going over there and making a little fire and cleaning that up.
So how much of the wood are you gonna get?
Well, I don't know what the dead wood, much I can. It depends on how much help I got. I'm gonna try to clear that roadway out a little bit. Got permission from the homeowner there.
I seen somebody's been cutting up there.
Yeah, there was somebody cutting up there, and we got a lot of the property belongs to the nursing home. We got some permission from them. They're gonna clean that all up, and then they put some dirt in. They're gonna clean it all up and try to get all that done before Chadwell Lane gets put in. So it'll open that area up because there's a lot of stuff hanging over, and them trucks that come down keep hitting it.
Right.
Yeah.
What time Saturday are you doing it? Is it Saturday?
Yeah, this Saturday. Probably about 8:30, you'll be over there.
Speaking of this weekend, aren't you also doing something for the 4th of July this weekend?
Yeah, we're gonna have roadblock Friday afternoon, Saturday morning.
That's not part of your report.
Oh, sorry.
How's that coming?
It's going great.
My bad.
We're at, real close to being at the amount that they've had for the last couple of years, and there's still a couple of the big ones that are committed out there yet, so it's going good.
Joe?
The tree on Academy, was that completely done at city's expense, or did they get a bill for that cleanup, or...
The tree was, well, I take it the city, the city workers, and did it on Saturday. I don't think we've sent a bill to them, though.
Are we going to?
That's up to Martin. We talked about it. Him and I talked about it. You know, you gotta... The reason that the tree should've been taken out a long time ago, but they didn't have money to do it, it's pretty expensive to do that, so we can send a bill, but I don't think you'll ever collect on it.
I get that. I can send a bill, but if they choose not to pay it...
Wouldn't their homeowner's insurance cover it?
Was it a dead tree or something?
Oh, it was a live tree, but the roots were bad and it was leaning, and it fell over. There was no wind or nothing. It just fell over. It was a pretty solid tree all the way up, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Two, three hundred.
Yeah.
I'll go ahead. I mean, I'll go ahead and send a bill. That's easy enough.
How much are we talking about? How many hours you spend?
About two and a half hours with four people.
At overtime? Is that what this is?
Well, one of them being me, so three people.
Wait, you count?
Well, I meant as far as overtime.
So, you know, we charge out $35 an hour, equipment time, for, let's say, a couple hours.
About two and a half.
Seventy, 150.
Steve showed up and helped us out, too.
Probably $400.
That's a pretty good deal. That is, for a...
Big good team.
What about utilities? Was that any... I heard it's some kind of electric garden.
Yeah.
Of course, that's citizens, but ain't nothing worrying for our work.
So the homeowner just didn't do anything, or what?
They were making the effort, so we just...
I see. There was another tree fell over. It was on the power line. They didn't have any, so we sent the city in to clean it up. Citizens knew about it, knew about the problem because they rerouted the wire in the tree earlier on last year because it was leaning against the wire, and they moved it into the middle of the tree instead of... Okay. So whose vehicles did it fall on? The homeowner's? Their vehicles, homeowner's vehicles.
You know, I was involved in a tree thing a few years ago, not in St. Genevieve and stuff, in another community. And it basically came down to wherever that tree fell. If it was not a known hazard that should've been taken care of, the tree ended up belonging to where it fell.
On the city street?
It was on private property.
Are you saying that if somebody has a tree, a limb falls off onto your property, you really have to cause action against them, even though the tree was on his property?
Yeah, it was my tree that fell on their property.
But if it's hanging over, you have the right to trim it.
Right.
We trimmed that tree, I think. Any other questions for Gary? Thank you.
Thanks, Gary.
Thank you, sir. Any committee reports?
Oh, just wanted to follow up on our new member that we did not appoint yet. And we need procedure, I guess, is what Pam and I discussed as far as what we should've done to get him on the agenda, a member of our St. Gen TV board.
Thought he was on there. Thought we freed him already.
Well, it just was brought up last meeting, mayor. It's okay. But I guess...
I'll get it figured out for the next...
And he would be replacing Gary, as a matter of fact.
Okay.
So, okay.
This is done by Russell.
Yeah, right. It's in the last month.
I need to bring up the park board, ensure it's there.
Unless you have something to talk about.
I'm good.
Good?
I'm good.
Joe, you ain't had no planning and zoning meetings lately? Okay. All righty.
We're gonna have a heritage meeting. I've done two staff reports with a heritage meeting. I'm so proud of myself. Pictures and everything.
Maybe next week, okay? Alright, is there any public comments? Well, come on up here, young lady. Come to the mic, please.
I'm Chris Beckerman.
I'm Ed Beckerman.
We live down on Second Street. We would like to see if there's some resolution to the gym owner and whoever is feeding the cat down under the arbors. Um, they are leaving cat food out all the time. Either it's bringing in skunks, other critters. One laid ten feet from where my kids play for two days dying of distemper. It's a safety hazard to the kids. Majority of the neighbors have dogs that have been sprayed. It's a safety hazard to the tourists that have been walking by that dying skunk. Is there something we could do to stop people from putting out cat food? And I don't, I don't know why we have a stray cat rescued downtown. I was not asked and it affects me a lot.
Well, stray cat rescue is private citizens.
But he doesn't live here.
Doing whatever they do.
He doesn't live here.
He owns a business here.
Right.
Yeah. And a skunk.
But a stray cat is still, you know, I was told that animal control can't do anything about the skunk, but all these stray cats, they could pick up. So, do I start calling animal control to pick up all the sc- the cats?
They'll put out traps.
But they can't do it for the skunk that laid there dying for two days.
The skunks are the problem.
The skunks are the problem.
The skunks are a problem in the city all over.
And skunks come for the food. You're absolutely right.
Is there something we can do?
Does the city have a plan to deal with any of that or?
Because.
Kind of looked away or?
This is a tourist attraction, is it not?
We, we don't have an ordinance that prevents people from putting out food.
Well, I had posted a comment to see what I could do to resolve this dying skunk. And people were commenting that had already went back to St. Louis.
Eric's gonna come in here.
We do have an animal with large ordinance and by statute, I, my understanding is once you've fed an animal and provided care, it becomes your animal. So, if you're feeding an animal that is at large, we could, we could summon somebody for that or cite somebody for that. So, I can certainly contact the owner and let him know that.
Well, I know that Alderman Mooney has already talked to him. And he said that he would stop putting it out at night. But I'm seeing skunks all the time running behind my house during the day. This isn't a nighttime issue.
There's skunks all over the neigh, they're all over the city.
There are cats all over that, that area, so.
Right, but there's a lot of kids down here. My kids could not go outside for two days.
And we're, we're sleeping on our house at night and you smell the skunk coming in. It's.
Well, what do we do? That was my question, because I followed up, because.
But is that, is that so? I mean, I live right off of where all of the city, the businesses are. Do you really want our tourists coming down and going, well, I really enjoyed St. Genevieve except for the skunk smell. I don't, they have a skunk issue, I'm not gonna go back.
I, but my, my whole point is in not to be argumentative at all. You could take every dog, every cat off the streets, take all the food off the street and you're still, St. Genevieve is gonna have a skunk problem because we, we have skunks everywhere in this town.
We don't deal with the skunks.
Pardon me?
Nobody deals with the skunks.
Yeah, that's the issue because it happened to me on Academy. My neighbor set up a trap and trapped a skunk. And what happened is the police showed up and then finally the conservation department came to get the skunk or do away with the skunk. Now, I don't know what happened there because what happens if there's an animal control? What, I mean, you call animal control.
The street department finally took care of it because it went out to the street.
Because he was told he was dead.
Yeah.
So, I'm just saying we have a skunk problem in St. Genevieve.
But it's a safety hazard.
So, I have a question. Is it the conservation department that's in charge of those or?
Wildlife of the state of Missouri.
Okay.
But they're not employed by the city?
Nope.
No. Okay, so can we, is that the direction this should take? I, it is a problem because especially when you drive through the county, they are everywhere.
My, my understanding from, from the conservation, just like they're saying, if we eliminate the food source, then they're gonna go somewhere that, that they find food.
That's what I was told.
I, I could agree with that.
They're gonna go out of town to find a food source. So, I mean, if, and we have sent letters to business owners in the, in the past that they're feeding animals or feeding cats, uh, and requested that they, that they discontinue that and, and they did. So, I certainly think that we can take the same, the same action here. I understand that, that he has some, uh, some initiative to, to raise money to feed these cats and trap them and, and I think he's in cooperation with one of the vets that will spay them and then he takes them out of town and, and releases them in the wild.
He's jumping right back into my backyard.
Okay, so I, I can certainly contact him and, and let him know that, that, you know, all of the stray cats that are around there that he's feeding, you know, could technically be considered his, his cats and that he would be responsible for them being at large and, and hopefully deterrent from, from feeding anymore, day or night. If that, if that pleases the board.
I, will you?
It's mayor.
Well, I, that's fine with me, but if I have an outside cat, who's, how many cats are we gonna get rid of? I'm, it's, people have cats, they run outside.
The skunks weren't an issue like years ago.
No.
I mean, this guy has started this rescue two years ago.
Yeah.
And now all of these cats, I mean, I've lived there for 13 years. It's maybe one cat every season that comes in. Now, there's six of them every morning sitting out there waiting on their food bowl.
Well, yeah, and, and, I mean, I would say it would seem as though if the person's leaving food out, that is attracting them, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so can we do something to preclude that person from attracting them?
That's what Eric, I think that's what Eric said.
That's what Eric's talking about.
Yeah, that's a.
Well, he told Alderman Mooney that he would only feed them during, you know, skunks are supposed to be nocturnal, but they are gonna come out when the food is out.
They'll stay all the time when they're down there.
Well, I'm telling you, we can get rid of every cat in St. Genevieve, you're still gonna have skunks.
It's the skunks I wanna get rid of.
I know that, but that's the problem. How do we get rid of the skunks?
I mean, I can trap them. The hand is a skunk in their yard.
Yeah, that's more, that's more, I have an issue too is because who do you call when you have a problem with the skunk?
I probably made 50 phone calls trying to get this issue resolved. I couldn't let my kids go outside and play.
Yeah, I know.
And that's the problem.
That's the issue right there. That's what burnt me on the whole issue is who do we call? Because if we have a stray dog.
I was playing circles.
Yeah, if we have a stray dog, we call animal control.
Right.
So, but that's not a jurisdiction for animal, you call animal control, that's not the answer.
Well, I called the sheriff's department. They said only cats and dogs. They only pick up strays. I'm like, I guarantee nobody wants it. It's a stray, I'll get it.
Want the conservation department to trap them?
Well, that's a problem. That's who I would, I would like.
I'd try it.
Yeah.
Right.
They, they will provide traps when they have them available, but my understanding is the majority of the time their traps are dedicated, you know, first come, first served. Uh, typically their stance is once a resident has trapped a skunk, then the resident needs to dispose of the skunk, uh, which is, which is certainly doable. I have, I have done it. It's, it's not as traumatic as.
So, we even call you?
I tried that.
I did.
I did. I asked the officer, I said, please come put this thing out of its misery.
Yeah.
He called Bennett, Bennett said no.
What? You said you didn't shoot a skunk in town.
Because we have an ordinance that for.
But it was sick.
Shooting him, I understand that.
Well, you should have took it, took it home or something. Did something with it.
I'm sure he didn't want it, it'd be spraying all the time.
It was awful.
Yeah, I know. It, it's, I walk and I mean, you could smell every morning, you could smell a skunk all the time. It's, it's, but the problem we have, I think what we need to do is we need to figure out what channel we go through to mitigate the problem. Can't, we can't eliminate the skunks.
If something you are named, has it already been covered?
A lot of it's been covered. I, I think maybe, uh, addressing the cat feeder with the likely euthanasia of cats if he persists in, in making an attractive nuisance for a cat. May focus his mind on not making the problem worse. Because cat lovers, the last thing they wanted is to see the city get involved in euthanizing the cats. It's not to say that we're going to, but if it becomes, if it keeps being a problem, that's gonna be your only alternative. If you have a lot of stray cats, you're gonna have to start killing them.
There's also underneath the arbors down between the, like, Bel After, Ever After and the ice cream parlor, somebody's putting cat food down there as well. I'm sure the people eating at the Audubon don't want skunks running past that food.
Well, I, I agree with the mayor. You could take all the cats away, you're still gonna have skunks. But, but if you take the food away, they are gonna, they may pass through, but they're gonna go somewhere where there is food. If you got food, you're gonna draw. It's like leaving stuff on your table, you end up with bugs.
What kind of stance would you recommend for the city to take to have people not put food out?
Well, our past efforts have been when we're made aware of it, it's writing nasty letters and, and we'll do that again.
Could there be an ordinance against it?
Technically, in the area that I'm speaking of, it is to be a safety hazard because I sat outside and watched people walk by and his tail would go up every single time.
It would be really, it would be really hard to write an ordinance that wouldn't catch a lot.
So, letters are better?
Because how, how do you know that they're leaving the food out or what was on there? Sprays as opposed to.
To their cats.
Dog in the backyard.
Right, that's the problem.
If people have dog food out in the backyard or cat feeder or whatever.
Exactly.
That's a, that's an overreach that you've used to order it down that path.
Right.
You know, if, if your neighbor is that much of a nuisance, you'd always sue them civilly for getting injunction against them as well. So, there are avenues that you can take as well outside of the city, um, including setting up the traps yourself if you're, if they're coming onto your properties or.
Well, that ties into what Eric was saying in that.
Thank you.
If they're creating a situation where it's drawing an inordinate amount of animals, then those animals are then considered theirs, which means they have to take care of them and contain them.
Correct.
So.
Well, if he's feeding the skunks, doesn't that make it ardently his as well?
I, I, I will contact him myself and, and, and be persistent in that he should stop feeding animals outside.
Because I shouldn't have to go and do a yard sweep every time I wanna send my kids outside.
Agreed.
But you're gonna still have skunks.
Yeah.
I'm just saying. And armadillos and foxes and coyotes, that's what happens when you live in a country.
Right, but none of them are gonna spray my kids.
I know that. I agree with you.
And that's, I.
Yeah, right.
Skunk.
Spray food, they make traps for skunks. It holds the tail down when they get the trap so they can spray. They're about sixty dollars a piece.
But I did see someone down by the arbors where you were talking about. And I don't know if they were feeding the cat, but they were definitely petting it.
And all of the cats are supposed to be vaccinated, but I know for a fact that the skunk had distemper and he's eaten out of the same cat holes as, he got it from somewhere.
Very bad.
Well, we're gonna, our plan of attack then is, well, Gary will talk to him about not feeding the cats.
That's Eric.
Eric, I'm sorry. Next time, when you get a skunk in your yard, which is gonna happen or something like that, I will call Eric and let him deal with that. Because he said on the record.
You gotta give me your fill then.
That he said, and you need his phone number, I'll give it to you.
On air.
He's here to serve.
Well, after Alderman were contacted for our area, you were our next phone call.
Well, I, I, I would have had to, I'd have sent Joe Prince down there to get the skunk.
No.
No, I know, I, no, I'm, I'm making, we're making a joke out of it, but it is serious. I, it happened to me on Academy. I had an opening and I don't feed cats or nothing, but I went out to work one morning and here comes a skunk and I had a, under my porch was an opening and the skunk went in under the porch. He's there.
This thing was never actually on my property.
No, I know, he was a sick, he was a sick.
But my kids would play all over in that area and, you know, I didn't know if this skunk was gonna come charge them or?
I'm more concerned that you, everybody got, that you got the runaround when an issue, somebody should have come out and took care of the problem.
Been aggravated.
I, I would have been, if, if, I'd have been living. I would have been up, I mean, but it's, that's what I'm more aggravated with is that animal control, the construct, did you try calling the conservation department?
Yes.
You did?
They directed me to the officer that contacted them, Chief Bennett.
Bob?
Having had a similar situation and stuff, uh, there's independent companies out there that do this. We had one over in Farmington. It was a bad infestation.
That happens.
And they call it a professional, you know, because those are considered wildlife. They're not domesticated animals like cats and dogs. That's why the cities and the counties, uh, enforcement doesn't hold true. But because it's considered wildlife and stuff, uh, you almost have to go to an independent.
It doesn't relate to cats, but, I mean, there are rules against taking wildlife with the state of Missouri.
That's right.
Without a permit.
Right, and that's why it's a permitted licensed company that comes in and does it.
Crime control?
Something like that.
Threat to control. Threat to public health and safety.
Yeah, that's a little different. That was a threat to public.
But shouldn't discharge, I mean, that's not, that's not a, no.
We used to have a tranquilizer gun. I don't know whatever happened to that.
Well, that's even what I suggested. I'm like, can't somebody train this thing to get it out of here? Because it was like spraying every.
What about a taser?
That would upset it.
And who's gonna get close enough to zap it with the taser?
That girl that works for Gary.
Yeah.
But we did, we used to, when we did animal control, you know, you remember this Pam, we had a tranquilizer gun and that's what they did. When, when they had one that they couldn't control, they just, and, and wildlife also.
Pam worked in animal control too.
We can't remember when we had. Yeah, I can remember when we had.
Don't start that over.
Now, the, the problem is, I'm, we need to follow up on what we're gonna do, because we have that problem. It's gonna happen. There's gonna be, in our area, you're gonna have a raccoon, a skunk, a fox, anything could get distemper, and where do we go from there?
Well, we just need a protocol that when that happens, that everybody knows, this is who you call.
Well, that's, we gotta get that figured out. That's our charge right here, is to...
Agreed.
You know, even that, you know, and if, if we got a list of, of, was it one? But if somebody needs their yard cut, we got people that we can give them. Same way with that, you know, even if we have to pay a professional, they'll come out and take care of it, which I'm sure is...
If we get this implemented, we also need an after-hours number.
Right.
Because like, I, did I talk to you that night, or I don't remember who I talked to, but then they told me to call Animal Control. Animal Control says we can't deal with it. I called Rob Zikowski, I got his voicemail, it sent me to the director. They, they sent me to the police officer, and it was just, it was a circle, and I kept going in that same circle. Everyone that I talked to was like, "Oh, well, we're through this on, or we're through this on."
Oh, okay.
So, Animal Control.
I called one by the, twice.
Well, somebody's gonna have to take the bull by the horns and do something.
Yeah.
Bob?
Joe?
I mean, somebody at this table, we need to, we gotta find out some protocol on what we're gonna do, because all joking aside, we're gonna deal with this again. And, and it's, it's not gonna get any better, you know?
Stop the food source, that's, that's the first thing.
That's the first.
Yeah. Well, that can be done easy enough, right, Pete?
Yes. And in fact, it's, as you said, I, you know, a couple, like, three years ago, I guess, we did that. And, um...
Well, he's fairly new, maybe, he needs to be reminded.
They stopped. But then new people move in, and, but he's new, he hasn't been there three years.
Well, and while this well-intentioned individual wants to help stray cats, they're really just making it worse, because they're attracting stray cats.
Well, my understanding is that the cats can be adopted out, and they're just being released back into my backyard.
Yeah.
They need, if they're gonna be adopted out, they need to be adopted out and...
I agree.
Fed on the doorsteps every morning.
I agree.
Yeah, road cats aren't gonna be adopted out, there's too many cats.
Yeah.
So, so, what these, what the rescue groups do is, they, they take them, they have them neutered, vaccinated, they release them back out into the wild, which is weird.
Well, I don't remember all these stray cats being downtown. They are being brought into this area.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
It's being...
They're going elsewhere and getting these cats and fixing them and bringing them back down here.
Is this one individual that's doing it?
Well, I think he's got a partner that's an insurance agent.
Can that one, what he spoke with?
Because she was doing that up in my mom's neighborhood.
Well, we'll follow up and try to get some help.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Any other public comments? Oh, you wanna look at your consent agenda?
Move through.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. It's just old business, it's gonna be a second reading on Bill number forty-two seventeen, an ordinance in the city of St. Genevieve, Missouri to establish a procedure to disclose potential conflicts of interest and substantial interest for certain officials?
Move through.
Second.
For a roll call vote?
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Jones?
Yes.
Alderman Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Ruzika?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no's, one absent. Bill number forty-two seventeen now becomes ordinance forty-one fifty.
Takes us to Bill number forty-two eighteen, an ordinance amending the city of St. Genevieve personal manual section six hundred, leaving holiday sub- subsection six oh one. Holidays set forth below.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Jones?
Yes.
Alderman Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Ruzika?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no's, one absent. Bill number forty-two eighteen now becomes ordinance forty-one fifty-one.
This bill takes us to Bill number forty-two nineteen, an ordinance approving the purchase of a twenty-eleven Dodge Dakota four-wheel-drive truck from Stupi Auto Sales, St. Genevieve, Missouri, in the amount not to exceed ten thousand dollars for the water department.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Ruzika?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Stupi?
Abstain. I don't have a diamond-busted and beset, but they're my brothers, so I abstain.
Alderman Jones?
Yes.
Six yes, zero no, one abstain, one absent. Bill number forty-two nineteen now becomes forty-one fifty-two.
This is the Bill number forty-two twenty-two, an ordinance approving the purchase of a two-ton freestanding workstation crane from Illinois Electric Works, Granite City, Illinois, in the amount not to exceed thirty-two thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars for the water department.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Ruzika?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Jones?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no's, one absent. Bill number forty-two twenty-two now becomes ordinance forty-one fifty-three.
Thank you very much. Takes us to new business, Bill number forty-two twenty-three,